Yeah, yeah, no, it was coming earlier, I know.
Yeah.
Don't get in trouble. This must be your one in charge. It was that word being on the sound. Come on, ladies, you're gonna miss the pledge.
Well, take it, please.
What? You know which? You know the first word?
I'll go with.
Go ahead.
My pledge is Susan White of the United States of America, two, three public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're fine, John, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the board meeting of September eighth. Just reminded, there's emergencies back in the building. Please do not leave until service directed by emergency service personnel. Your home, your love.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm requesting approval for the board meeting minutes of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
So, move, motion to approve as. And changes to additions, if all in favor.
Good evening, everybody. I have two bills sheets for tonight. The first one is for the period of, well, eight twenty two to eight twenty five. Those bills total four hundred eighty thousand, six seventy to fourteen. Five lodges for those. First one was First Citizens Bank. That's what payload or the third payment, thirty four thousand, five sixty six fifty one. P S N G Long Island Electricity, thirty three, four sixteen ninety four. Source gas storage requirements, fourteen thousand, oh, seventy oh eight. Blair River for sludge removal, twelve thousand, nine ten fifty. Murphy and Lynch refunded taxes, twelve grand. Totally one oh six, nine sixty four oh three. I could have approval.
Make a motion.
Second, any questions, decisions, if you're all in favor.
Aye. Okay, now the current period of September third through the eighth. Bills total one million, five sixty four, nine fifty six, thirty eight. First largest one, Agio for phase two gerard shoot extension, part of that ten million dollars we have in accounting. Six ninety two, three forty eight, eighty. Pink Electrical for the traffic light at Oak and Maple, one eighty to eighty eight, seven forty eight. Of which about forty percent was paid by the person that ran into the fall that knocked it down at first. H two M one, ten, two ninety seven, twenty two. Sewer extension. Engineering fees, New York State Workman's Comp, ninety three, nine eighty nine, twenty five. That's on Workman's Comp insurance. And Flag Stars for lease payment on a truck. A refuse truck, forty seven thousand, one sixty five, eighty three. And they total a million, one twenty six, six eighty eight, fifty eight. If I could have approval.
Motion?
Motion.
There I can. The only other thing I have in front of you, you have the cash balances. And then again, the last one. Thank you very much.
During here, but I'd like to request approval to inform the following members. Do the climate smart task force chaired by Johnson Keyes. We'll do it as, as well, I'll discuss where his name Steve Pugh is the trustee liaison. David Kennedy is a member. Uh, Rick Collins is a member, Joshua May is a member, and August. Motion. All right, Lord, you want to explain that?
Uh, so Climate Smart Communities is a New York State program and state is has a list of actions that you can gain points. And when we get a certain amount of points, there's a bronze level. Uh, and there's a silver level. Currently, there's five towns on Long Island that have qualified at the silver level. Uh, there is, are no villages and we are seeking to get to the bronze level. So what we need to do is to go through the list of actions that New York State has published, which is extensive. And the first thing we're doing is identifying those things that we've already done through Johnson Controls and seeing what documentation uh, is required to prove that. And then as we move through the list, we are then seeking what other actions can we plan so that we can get those additional points? So we're hoping over the next year to get to the point where we can put in an application. They accept the applications orderly, um, but they do allow you to upload your documentation throughout the year. So you can start to see where you potentially are. Uh, so the first thing we're going to be doing, which you'll hear about a little bit later, it's on the agenda, is to do a drive Long Island, um, E V drive. And you work with local dealerships to do promotions, maybe have a dealer bring one of the cars down to the, um, railroad station and tell people about the benefits of E Vs. And then depending on what sort of increase in sales they see in our zip code. So would be even outside the village, we couldn't qualify for a certain amount of points.
Wow.
What do points get us?
Well, there's a certain amount of points you need to get to bronze level. And once you are at the bronze level, when you are filling out certain grant applications, say for the wastewater treatment plant in the future, uh, you get, uh, additional, um, points toward dollars. So long term, it's something like the prom housing that the state is encouraging communities to increase their, um, climate, decrease their climate footprint. That's what it's about. So we have a really good group. Um, Augie Ruck, this show, I know I didn't pronounce that exactly correct, but, uh, he works for Cornell Cooperative and he's part of, uh, a group they call the Clean Energy Hub here on Long Island through nice service. He's very knowledgeable. Uh, Joshua Maynes is a teacher. And his class worked with David down at the Living Shoreline to remove ragmities. Uh, Rick Collins is a local resident. He's got, um, a lot of interest in the environment. And then you know David and Steve, so. And Jonathan Keys, the chairperson, he, uh, is, works in the planning department at Suffolk County and he's, uh, on the Lake Trustee Joe Keys's side. So that's the group and you'll hear a little bit more later because there's a few more things on the agenda. Do we have a second on this, Herb?
Okay.
Okay.
Hi. David Kenny. Do you have any report?
Evening, everyone. Pleasant to be here to give a report on a B I D and special projects in the, in the village. Uh, first, uh, very honored to be serving on this committee and very excited on the great work we're gonna highlight and how Patchogue Village is really above many villages when it comes to, uh, environmental concerns. Um, all right. So tomorrow is our next B I D meeting. It is at four o'clock here in the conference room. Of course, if any trustee ever wanted to sit in, join us, you know, let me know. We would always welcome anybody, uh, to join our discussions. Of course, we have Tom Furb as your appointed liaison to the bid, but I'm sure Tom wouldn't mind some colleagues, uh, came in as well.
He should check with me first.
Uh, yeah, and we're at the process now as we're looking at a little bit of a surplus, nothing crazy. I think we've identified about ten grand that maybe we could earmark towards certain projects and, uh, one thing, you know, a couple of things, you know, uh, I know Terry Street, uh, we're, we're gonna be engaging in looking at that and maybe how we can improve on the quality of our landscaping there and some irrigation. And, and trustee Furb in particular is leading an initiative that, you know, uh, it's time maybe to consider a public bathroom in the community somewhere. So, uh, those are things that we're looking at and, uh, and, uh, you know, we'll keep, continue to update as we move along. Um, sure, we're waiting for the final confirmation from the county. Uh, I've certainly gotten very good verbal, uh, uh, good notice that we're gonna get that grant for Waverly Avenue. Uh, it hasn't been official yet, but it's looking good. And, uh, now we're heading into the last, I think, five weeks left of our farmer's market. Uh, it's been a wonderful season. It's really been going good. I anticipate these next five weeks might be the best. This is when the, the summer produce that's grown is now gonna be, uh, available. So I expect that, uh, we'll see a lot more people there, a lot more vendors and a lot more activity. And, uh, you know, I'll probably invite Abby at the end of the season, maybe to come to a board meeting and, you know, just, uh, kind of give your, you know, her thoughts on how the season went and all that. Um, all right. And then, you know, we had, you know, we had some exciting news since the, the last meeting that we were here. Um, first and foremost, I'm very happy to report, if you haven't heard already, uh, that we did get our grant that will allow us to replace uh, the playground equipment at Shorefront Park at the tune of nearly three hundred thousand dollars. So it's a really sizable grant, uh, gonna have a much more improved, uh, playground equipment down there with sun structures. Maybe we could even get some points for adding these sun structures on our client. I don't know. I think.
There's something about, we have a gate policy or, you know, on the books, and I think that that gets you some points.
Absolutely. Um, and then, of course, you know, with grants, we did learn earlier this year, we did also get a grant, uh, in combination in partnership with the citizens campaign for the environment for the screw, food scrap program. Um, and I'm a very, it's, it's been announced in the paper, uh, and we're certainly getting a lot of my friends and neighbors are very excited to participate. So the idea and the hope is that we're gonna identify a hundred families to be part of this pilot program. Think we'll get there, uh, without a problem because I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from it. But if there is anybody out in the public, uh, that wants to learn more of how, what this program is about and how you could participate with this pilot program, uh, there's an educational meeting on us. I think it's a Wednesday, September the seventeenth, uh, seven P M, uh, downstairs at the library. Uh, so and even if you just want to learn more about it, it's open to everybody because this is good knowledge to have. But the program itself obviously would be to, to village residents to participate.
At six P M?
Seven P M. Make seven, seven to eight thirty at, at the library, be that, be that meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, other good news we got over the last few weeks, uh, I know we're anticipating and to get the train station solar panels up and running and those charging stations there are going. Uh, we were looking at early November, my last communication with Johnson Controls is that the part could be coming in in the next week or so. So there's a chance, uh, that maybe we'll get this, uh, up and running a little earlier than we anticipated at the beginning of the summer. Uh, a little update on our oyster seeding program, um, uh, people from C Tuck have reported to us that it is exceeding expectations that the oysters are really growing really well. Uh, currently, right now, we do have, uh, we're waiting for approval from the D E C where they're gonna take some of the growing of oysters and do a little experiment where they're gonna put it in spots along the living shoreline uh, as a way to get it, uh, above the tide line, uh, and to see there's a, there's a thought that they could even, uh, grow more because there'd be less, uh, susceptible predators. So, uh, we'll keep you up on that. And also, uh, you're gonna also see at the, the mascot dock just, uh, north, I guess, of the, uh, oyster area. Um, there's gonna be a, a nice little kiosk sign, uh, where residents are going to be invited to place a cell phone and to help us document the, uh, the living shoreline over time. Uh, you guys had approved that in a past meeting. See Grant, uh, has started giving me some sketches of how that would look. And what's great about this is, uh, scientifically, it's gonna help us document the continued growth of this, uh, shoreline. And, you know, and it's also part of our requirements of the grants we receive that we do have this, uh, continued education and engagement with the community. And, uh, this will help us, uh, check off those boxes. So. Uh, another thing, you know, as we move down into the fall and out of the summer, a lot of things are, are starting to percolate. Uh, I'm gonna be meeting this week with a, a group from the village here. Uh, obviously now as we see N Y U Langone and, uh, Kansas, New York Cancer Blood are coming to conclusion or getting closer to coming to conclusion. Uh, there's really been a discussion about the whole Terry Street parking lot, uh, in general. Uh, the post office, I think, had some requests there. The library's always, uh, had some concern, particularly about the dumpster area. Uh, Lori Devlin and, and, and her tree group and, and her, and the beautification committee have certainly been concerned about the landscaping there. Uh, so we're gonna be sitting down with Tim and other staff here and kind of look at that parking lot as a whole and, and see what we can do. Maybe even improve the traffic flow a little bit, maybe even get a few more, uh, parking spots. Uh, Michael Caposey, who owns the building, uh, that used to hold Saint Joseph's College, has a proctor there. I know he had a meeting with you and he met with me as well. He had some interesting ideas of how we could add a few more spots and, and maybe improve that. So, uh, uh, stay tuned for that. And, and another project, and I know Kevin Weeks is really taking the lead on this. We had a resident who's been reaching out to us about South Ocean Avenue and, you know, really recognizing how that is our premier boulevard that takes us down to our waterfront and what we can do to kind of celebrate that a little bit more, you know, whether it's repairing sidewalks, adding, uh, other kind of landscaping or, or, or things like that. So, uh, I know we'll be meeting later in the, later in the month and considering those things as well. And then, of course, my big project really is gonna be, uh, you know, jumping right into phase two. Now it's time to really, uh, start to, to, you know, put pens to paper and, uh, really come up with what the final design would be, uh, for uh, just east of, of the band shell there. Uh, so yeah, so that's everything that's going right now unless anybody's got any questions from me. I'm all good. All right. Thank you very much. You guys are the great.
I understand that I missed it on Saturday, but at the center it was a great, great event.
That's okay. I forgive you. We have a lot more events coming up, so I'm glad to hear what the next one's gonna be. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to thank Tom for volunteering to be a part of Saint La Brea this past Saturday. I did see Susan there and I believe myself, Jack. So thank you so much for coming. It was a really great day. And the weather held out just in time for us. Um, we're shaping up to have a really busy fall. Our event's calendar for the chamber is extremely busy as of right now, and I'm sure it's going to get busier. Uh, Wednesday, September tenth, Dr. Barma from Suffolk, Suffolk Cardiac Care and Patchogue Recover Cardiovascular Health Topics um, at the Patchogue Library. It's from six thirty to seven thirty. Thursday, September eleventh, the Historical Society is actually going to honor a fallen son. Um, they're gonna be honoring the legacy of U S Navy SEAL Lieutenant Michael P. Murphy. Um, and that's gonna be at the Historical Society Museum from seven P M to nine P M. Sunday, the fourteenth, the Patchogue Arts Council is having its own Terry. It's gonna be a great event. It's from one to five. Make sure that you stop down at Terry Street. Uh, Friday, the nineteenth, we have a grand opening and ribbon cutting for E C C eater. It's right on River Avenue from two to four K M. Ribbon will be cut at three.
What day is that again? So what, I'm sorry, nineteenth?
Friday, the nineteenth.
Friday nineteenth.
Yep. And then Saturday, September twentieth, from nine to one, the Patchogue Fire Department is having, holding their fourth annual Paul Felice Car Show. That same day, Saturday, the twentieth, from six P M to nine thirty P M, Patchogue's the Latino Leadership Connect is holding their seventh annual Hispanic Heritage Celebration at theater. Um, the tickets are online already. And then on Sunday, the twenty first, busy weekend, we are going to have our Chamber Annual Barbecue on the Beach at Watch Hill. Aside from that, I have one request from you guys about the Fall Festival.
Yeah, that's under, uh, Tom.
I have so many things I can change. So we just do this right now. There's a motion, request approval for the Greater Patchogue Chamber of Commerce Special Events Application. Uh, for the Fall Festival to be held on Saturday, October eighteenth with a rain date of October twenty fifth, from twelve P M to five P M with street closures between Naples Avenue and West Avenue from ten thirty A M to six P M. That's motion.
No, I'll second that.
I want to. Bye.
Bye.
You have offered it?
Um, Savannah.
Yeah.
Um, Saint La Brea was fabulous. And, uh, all of the trustees were there. Devin and Elizabeth were both there.
And Steve was there.
And Steve was there.
Yeah, make sure they weren't cheating over there.
And yes, he was, I paid him. No, it, it, it really was, it was the, the tarantella is my same.
Dance, yeah.
That was fabulous. And, you know, one, one of the, the best things about, we, we, our booth was right next to the, the, uh, Pat Men Cheerleaders. And in exchange for a Saint La Brea shirt, they sold T shirts for us.
They did an amazing job.
For two hours a piece because they, you know, they know how to cheer. There's T shirts, T shirts. And I got a little tattoo, which is since we were all. It was just, it was family oriented. It was.
I think you have to say this event is firmly embedded now in, in the, in the calendar of events for the, for the village. And it's, it's really a major success. It was a great day.
I do have to say Laura Cardi was amazing finding the tarantella dancers. And obviously, this is actually my last event that I finally went through all the events. So David was instrumental in helping us plan everything.
The lady, the tarantella lead lady is the tall lady.
Yes, her name is Simona. She was wonderful.
You're the lady who walks around in the stilts. Yeah, yeah. And what she's, she's at every ladder to find her and was she ten feet up? She must have really good livelihoods also. No, but she, she led, she led the tarantella stuff. And there were, you know, like, kind of lines. There were like thirty people doing these Italian dances in the middle of Patchogue.
We'll have pictures up on the website.
Well, I, I hope we get her next year.
Yes.
Sign her up.
That's the plan.
Really good.
There was a lot of pride of, um, being Italian and I loved it. It was just so, so beautiful to see.
That makes me really happy. That's all I have. I hope you guys have a great evening.
You want to, what's your, well? It was always from where an Irish guy.
If you're Irish and you're Italian, we've always got to like watch the produce.
Thank you very much. You know, public safety, uh, each race here. Um, just, uh, again, Saint La Brea Festival couldn't have gone without our code enforcement, people in Suffolk Police who kept it really, uh, a good, uh, good, good event.
And a shout out to our D P W.
Yes, it's D P W.
Peter Lozides was on it. He was directing.
And, uh, you know, it was great. It was a lot of fun. So, uh, thank you. Um, at theater, please check the, uh, website. The theater shows coming up. And, uh, D P W, um, what do I have here? Nothing. No D P W. I think with D P W, the most amazing thing is, I was on Main Street's six thirty quarter. Oh, yeah, it's cleaned up. And Saturday morning, you hear nobody. Yeah. Yeah, it's terrific. It's amazing what those guys can do. Open, open it up so quickly and get that track moving again. Well, it's really good. All right. I'd like to request approval for the Department of Food Works to purchase a twenty twenty five Ford truck S D T Y F three fifty S R W and a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars with a funding source of budget surplus.
Second.
Aye. Request approval from the Department of Food Works to purchase a new stock twenty twenty three Ford F fifty five, five O X L four by four diesel regular cab, axion aerial lift as presented at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars with the funding source to be determined. Motion, motion.
Second.
David. I'd like to request proof for Peter Sarge Junior and Tim Norberg to attend the Water Environment Federation Federation Technical Conference at the McCormick Place Venture Center in Chicago, Illinois, September twenty eighth to October first, one twenty five with registration, lodging, travel, and meals not to exceed three thousand dollars for each person. Motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Bye.
Request proof to go out to drink for decorative street lighting assembly. What we're looking to do is we, we, over the years, we're just taught them as they got knocked down, we bribe, whatever. We're looking to get a solid price that we know for a period of time. Yeah, the group people keep running into them. Great. So, motion to rest.
Second. All fair.
I'm prepared. Request proof to authorize submission of an application for the New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement grant for the Patchogue wastewater treatment facility expansion appropriating total project costs in the sum of twenty four million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Confirming funding sources, designating the mayor as authorized representative and appointing Teresa Riley as minority business officer. That twenty, twenty four million dollars, we already have seven point seven. Right. It came in from the R E D C Regional Economic Development Council. And, uh, three point five, well, actually, our, what does he know?
He's the E P A director.
Well, he was, uh, Congressman Zellin, but three point five million. It just to, to set as a history, in twenty twenty one, that twenty four million dollar project was fourteen million dollars. Yeah, there you go. Then the house got up to twenty four million dollars. And this, they projected, we're gonna get started, but it's probably never twenty nine. And then I don't know what we do. So this twenty, it's, it's twenty four million minus the seven, minus, minus twelve, ten. So. But fourteen mil short at that price. There was a motion, the second.
Second.
All fair.
Aye.
So, kids. Delighted to spare.
Yeah.
Does she break them?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a couple of reports for you this evening. First of all, your zoning and planning report. Uh, we did have a planning board meeting on the twenty sixth where there was one new application for eighty nine North for their outdoor patio. Two were adjourned to closed and held. Um, we had a zoning board meeting since our last get together here, um, that was held on the second of September. Uh, there was a new home on Sunset, Kelly Builders' application on Mulford and a Bay Avenue residence for a medical hardship. Um, on the sixteenth, we have an upcoming zoning board meeting with three more new applications. Um, a fence on Hillside, uh, health related services, uh, sixty four West Main and a Ryder Avenue Division of Two Farces. Um, so that's your planning and zoning report. I wanted to mention for everyone out there that our fantastic old timers softball game is going to be held this Saturday at Ryder Avenue Park at two P M. So please do join us for an afternoon of fantastic softball um, by a great group of people and some good food and a lot of fun. Uh, we're also having our last summer fall concert this Saturday at Shorefront Park from nine, from seven P M to nine P M. So please mark your calendars and come join us for some great music celebrating the eighties. That's my. Uh, my wish list this evening. I'm requesting approval for the menorah lighting to be held on Sunday, December twenty first at five P M at Capital One Plaza.
Motion. Second. Second. Aye.
I'm requesting approval for the sixty third annual Christmas parade Saturday, November twenty ninth on Main Street with lineup at five P M and kickoff at six P M. That's a motion.
Second.
All fair.
Aye. Requesting approval for the sixth annual walk through zoo at three eighty bay from eleven A M to two P M on Saturday, November eighth. That's a motion.
Second. Aye.
I'm requesting approval to hold the fall senior luncheon on Friday, October tenth from twelve P M to two P M at three eighty bay. Always a good event there. Motion.
Second. There. Aye.
I'm requesting approval to hold the sixth annual kids nature scavenger hunt and pumpkin patch pickup on Saturday, October eleventh, from twelve P M to one P M at three eighty bay. That's a motion.
Second.
Aye.
I'm requesting approval for Kaylee Thatcher to work the fall hip hop dance program from September thirteenth to October nineteenth on Saturdays from ten A M to eleven thirty A M at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars. That's a motion.
I'll second that. Aye.
Requesting approval for Carrie Randall to volunteer for the fall hip hop dance program from September thirteenth to October nineteenth on Saturdays from ten A M to eleven thirty A M. That's a motion.
Second. Aye.
Requesting approval to hold a chunky blanket making class on Saturday, November twenty second from ten A M to twelve P M at three eighty bay. That's a motion.
Second. Aye.
Requesting approval for the fall hip hop dance program on Saturdays from ten A M to eleven thirty A M A M from September thirteenth to October eighteenth with a performance at the Band Shell at Shorefront Park on October nineteenth. That's a motion.
Second.
Always an incredible event. Those, the kids dance there.
It's getting better and better.
So, so magical to watch them. I'm requesting approval for the residents of First Lane to hold a block party on Sunday, September fourteenth. That's a motion. And I'll add in the little look the other way for.
Open, open. Open, open containers will be permitted.
Container to carry on the street for that day.
Double second.
I'm requesting approval to accept the retirement of Senior Assessment Clerk Kathleen Gallo. Effective January fifth, twenty twenty six. An incredible ride. She is a wonderful employee. I'm over the moon, happy for her. Best day ever. She's my next door neighbor. She's amazing. She's wonderful. So we wish her all the best and a very, very happy, fulfilling retirement. That's a motion.
Second.
And again, a big thank you to everyone who made St. Loretta such an amazing cultural event here in Patron. It was a really good.
How come Susan did dual party stuff? They did hip hop stuff and the party stuff.
That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
So importantly, uh, uh, the Arts Council is having, uh, the Arts Ontario event on, uh, Su- Sunday, September fourteenth. And if you haven't gone, it's a lot of fun. Uh, I buy soap and little things for everybody for Christmas. It's, it's super. Really, really.
And, and you do a good job, trustee Ferg, so far the weather forecast looks.
The weather's always been great.
Oh, I got, I got the rain to hold off on.
Yes, you did. I got, I got to do.
No, I have a special food. And, and, uh, you know, the theater, ELO. Tomorrow night, Rob Petty, Friday night.
Well.
Covers. Okay. The guy, the guys who do, the guys who do, uh, uh, what's that guy? Queen.
Oh, yeah, right.
He sounds like the real deal.
They, they do. They sound.
Totally, it's totally like they came back from the dead. This guy's voice.
Oh, fair enough. I think the ELO is one of the.
I'm really interested in the Girl's Gone Bible, the really popular, I mean, for the girls. So I've been hearing a lot about Girl's Gone Bible.
And of course, we do have the Latino event.
Yes.
The twentieth.
Twentieth, yes.
Everybody, it's really fun. I've got some ser- serious stuff here. Uh, request approval to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Energy Tax Savers, E T S I. Where E T S I will file on behalf of the village an application to the Internal Revenue Service for the Inflation Reduction, Reduction Act rebates. In the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollar per vehicle for two Ford Lightning one fifty E Vs. Uh, as presented for a total rebate of fifteen thousand dollars for a fee of seven hundred and fifty bucks. That's a motion.
Second.
I. Thank you. Uh, request approval for the voluntary donation of employees' vacation, person sick, oh, and, and or sick time. For Vincent Felice, who is on leave due to illness, with the understanding that the time deducted from the donor's, uh, bank of time. Will not be returned to that employee bank on time. Once it has been credited to Vincent Felice. That's a motion.
Second.
I. And that's totally voluntary. Thank you. Uh, request approval to ru- to hire William Pat Daouski. I hope I did that okay. As a seasonal worker. That's taxicab. Uh, as a seasonal worker in the Department of Public Works with a driver's license for an hourly rate of seventeen dollars effective September ninth. That's motion. I. Request approval for, uh, a change order number five for H two M project number P A T V twenty three oh three. For Gerard Street Sure Project, a credit in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand.
Eighteen.
I'm sorry, one hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred ninety nine dollars and zero cents. For unused contract items with the addition of the one sixty South Ocean Avenue lateral connection as presented. And last but not least, request approval of the Village of Patchogue Ambulance Company Certified Points Listing. For the twenty twenty four Lo Sap Program. That's motion.
Second.
I. That last one is, uh, a, an accounting of, uh, credit for, uh, employees' hours of work. To, I guess, to their retirement plans. I had to ask for it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I've got your buildings and housing report. I, I wanted to flip it around this month to do the, the financials first, but I just didn't have. My calculator broke. It was such a good month in August. But we'll, we'll do it next time. It's good news. But I've got the field report for August and again, summertime, a lot going on. Uh, we have three building and housing summonses that were issued, uh, four plumbing permits went out, nine building permits, uh, eight for demolition. That's a lot. Eighteen rental permits issued, twenty seven notices to violation. That's a lot. I'll speak to that in a minute. We had six complaints. No, no, no illegal dwellings were reported and no overcrowded properties were reported or investigated. There was only, for the month of August, there's only one new planning board application. Two new applications for the zoning board of appeals, three applications that were handled by the Architectural Advisory Committee. And as I said, the total revenue for the department will be given at the next meeting in August, uh, but it was a good month. Um, personally, I've fielded, uh, at, at least a half dozen, um, requests for, uh, Looking into investigations in various parts of the village and we're working on that. And again, a reminder as Deputy Mayor Krieger points out all the time is, um, public safety. If, if anyone sees something or knows of something, problem they want to report, we, we jump on this stuff very quickly. Um, I would point out that, um, as we try to be good neighbors, I think that's one of the things we try to do is to be all good neighbors. That maybe sometimes first go to your neighbor if you feel comfortable doing so and maybe report the issue directly as a nice little chit chat. Maybe that's the best way to, uh, settle it, whether it's an overhanging tree limb or a hedge that's hanging out over the sidewalk, whatever the case may be. But, uh, if you feel more comfortable reporting it to me personally or the building department, we will go make a visit. We will look into it and we'll make sure that we get it solved to everyone's satisfaction. That's your, uh, building and housing re- report for tonight. Uh, along those same lines, I'd like to request approval to hire Jim Redfield as a part-time billing inspector. At an hourly rate of fifty dollars and that would be effective September ninth. Quickly, uh, uh, Mr. Redfield comes highly recommended. He has a great deal of experience. And, um, Senior Building Inspector Peter Sarge is, uh, especially looking forward to having him, having him on board with some of the big projects that are going on. Uh, I mean, the Carriage House project, the medical facilities, which are getting close to being towards the end and of course, the proposed hotel. Mr. Redfield will be a great help with these projects. So, uh, it's a motion to hire him.
Second.
I'd like to request approval for a provisional change in title and salary for Nancy Hour. To provisional Senior Justice Court Clerk, effective September second, two thousand twenty five. With a corresponding pay adjustment as per the union contract and that's a motion.
I would happily second that.
Yeah, Nancy is. She does.
Second.
Second.
I, uh, sticking with the Village Justice Court, I'd like to request approval to authorize the Village Justice Court. To apply for a Justice Court Assistance or J cap grant in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six grant cycle. For up to thirty thousand dollars and zero cents. And that is a motion.
Second.
Fair.
I, I'd like to, uh, resolve. Well, I mean, uh, resolve that the Climate Smart Task Force, which we had appointed early this evening. Will meet monthly in the municipal building right here on the third Monday of each month at five thirty P M. The meeting date falls on a holiday Monday. It will be scheduled as soon as practical thereafter. Motion.
Second.
All right. And again, with the Climate Smart Task Force, I'd like to request approval for the Climate Smart Task Force. To conduct a Drive Electric Community Campaign from September first, twenty twenty five. Through November thirtieth, twenty twenty six in partnership with Drive Electric All Island. That's a motion.
Second.
And finally, just to reiterate what, uh, well, you know, we have a thing. If you're a trustee, once you're a trustee, as trustee Kennedy, uh, said earlier. Yes, we are. Thanks to a, uh, a well-intentioned resident who has made a number of, of very, uh, Intelligent, uh, comments and suggestions. We're gonna form a committee, uh, and we're gonna start meeting later this month to begin looking into, um, Improving, uh, South Ocean Avenue, um, public safety being our, our paramount, um, intention. But also to aesthetically improve the thoroughfare. Try to recognize that it, it had at one time, it was one of the glorious thoroughfares. That let people down to the water, uh, which at one time was a resort area for people from as far away as New Jersey and New York City and Point West. Uh, so we're looking for, um, suggestions from anyone. I mean, I got a bunch, but, uh, Uh, we're trying to also be wise as how we can budget for things. And Tim Norberg and DPW, I was already involved, looking at some of the, Uh, items that have been suggested. Yes, and Mayor Pontiary came up with some very intelligent and prudent suggestions as to where we could start. So. It's exciting stuff. That may be one of our next major, uh, roadway projects in the village. Looking forward to that and we will report back as we get things going. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'll go directly to the request. I would like to request approval to ratify prior approval for the colony shop to hold the sidewalk sale on Friday, August twenty ninth. And Saturday, August thirtieth, from ten A M to five P M. Motion.
Second.
I.
I would like to request approval for the Patch of Pepper Library to hold a Hispanic cultural fair. On Saturday, September twenty seventh, from twelve P M to four P M, Terry Street closed from five A M to six P M. From the entrance to the west entrance to the Terry Street parking lot, to the intersection with Taylor Lee. Motion.
Second.
Is this the first time they're doing this? Sounds pretty cool.
Yeah, sounds like that.
I would like to request. Oh, sorry. I would like to request approval to rescind resolution number sixty one dash twenty twenty five authorizing the six thousand expenditure. For the Patch of Theater Archway. Motion.
Second.
I would like to request approval to pay L F G booking one thousand six hundred for work related to the installation of the Patch of Theater Archway. Motion.
Second.
I would like to request approval for Suffolk County Police Department to use Bay Avenue Park Soccer Field for their soccer program. On Fridays from five P M to six thirty P M, starting on September nineteenth and ending October twenty fourth. Motion.
I'll second that.
I always love that program.
That's a great program, terrific program.
And I would like to request approval to amend resolution number, uh, one eight five dash twenty twenty five. An authorization for a proposal from Lero Engineers for the Patch of Theater Archway to reflect. An increase in cost from two thousand eight hundred to seven thousand two hundred. Motion.
Second. I don't think we approved the, uh, Suffolk. We, we didn't get it all.
You're correct.
All hands on deck approval for the Suffolk County Police Department.
Uh, that's a motion. Both moved and seconded.
Oh, uh-huh.
You're right, no, you're right.
Oh, you seconded that fact.
Sorry, Parliament.
Um, well, again, St. Loretta was fantastic. I love to see the pride and, um, just the families walking. It was just very nice. The weather was perfect. Um, don't forget about the, the, the theater on next Saturday. Um, they've worked very hard for that event and I'm looking forward to that event as well and another grand opening as well, so.
Could we piggyback on what I forgot a couple of things? Uh, of course, this coming Thursday is the twenty fourth, uh, anniversary of the attacks. Uh, nine eleven, there will be a lot, a lot of events going on that day. Savannah mentioned the event in the evening at the Historical Society with, uh, Lieutenant, uh, Michael Murphy's father, I believe, is gonna make that presentation. But there are three, uh, nine eleven. Observations right here in the village that day. So, um, if, if folks want to come out and, um, Reflect, um, remember, uh, one is scheduled at our nine eleven memorial park, uh, on Maiden Lane at eight forty five in the morning. The, uh, veterans organizations are holding theirs at the American Legion Hall. I believe that's five o'clock, I think. And then the fire department, uh, is gonna hold their, um, observation at the Jennings Avenue Firehouse. And I think that one starts at six thirty, I think.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, there's an event for everyone that would like to, uh, uh, come out and, uh, uh, remember, um, Those that were lost, the heroism of those who gave their lives to save others and, uh, to come and reflect on that day. Uh, so, rethink's going on, I think.
Thank you. There's anything?
Nothing.
Well, no money to spend.
You liked the hundred and six thousand better than a million, whatever.
These are really good looking garbage. I'm sorry.
We're turning over here. Uh, I guess, you know, my name is George Ariana from Ford Fair Street. I think this is my second or third time.
Third, I think, yeah.
Yes, and, uh, I just want to see what's the updates, uh, as I was told that you guys know, take a look at it and about, uh, Rats that I have the issues.
The rats, you, you call the exterminators come. I know that they've been there. I don't know whether anything has changed. But that always takes a little bit of time. But we have contact exterminators to work with us to clean up that mess. Cause we have it there and we have a cup. Any place, every place we have a dumpster. That's what's happening.
Yeah, there are other complaints about other areas in the village. Same deal. It's usually restaurants, dumpsters, uh, and, and rats.
The only thing I've turned on here is because I don't see any improvement. I see more rats than.
And, and I'm saying to you is that we're doing what we can do. Can't trap, can't chase them down. You gotta get the exterminators. And then that takes a little bit of time because they, they put the traps out. And I just wish, I wish that it was different, but it isn't unfortunately.
If I may, I know this is no comfort to you. But this is one of the biggest rat seasons everywhere. In all the majors, I read it, I think you see the Wall Street Journal, or the, or the New York Times, or the Washington Post two days ago. Every major city in the United States, every major city in Europe. Because we're having a warm summer, nearly warm summer, there are a lot more rats to start with. And they're everywhere. I saw a dead rat in front of the, the Carnegie Library.
Really?
Yes. Yes.
Also, the thing is, I, I walked through the, uh, dumpsters, uh, yesterday. Uh, which matter of fact, before I did that, I went to Lowe's and I spent over two hundred dollars buying things that, you know, supposedly keep away the, the rats from the house. Cause they have like the electric things that, you know, supposedly they keep that away. And the only thing that I saw was like one black, black box next to one of the dumpsters. That's what I saw. So, with the, you saying to me that, that you guys working on it, but I only saw one box on it.
All we need is called the exterminators and have them do what they do. We don't do it.
Certainly, but when I did call, like, two years ago, when I did call the exterminators, they put at least ten boxes around the house. And when I went over there, I only see one box. So. It cost me over three hundred dollars. Now it's two hundred dollars. So it's like, you know. I'm spending more money than with the, I guess.
No doubt about it. This isn't redoubling you at all. Please, don't, understand that. I know what we've done on our part, during phone calls, but maybe it's not the phone calls we have to make. Maybe we have to call somebody in, sit them down. Find out what his plan is. Because it's Terry Street.
Yes, yes, a lot of, a lot of calls.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is just.
And what I'm saying is that we're doing what we can do on our side, but maybe it isn't enough. Maybe what I need to do is meet with the owners of the exterminating company and go through with, what are you doing? How are you doing it? What is it in the question? Will you do it right?
And like I said, I'm not here because, you know, I wanna, I'm just here because, you know, the same deal with my kids, same deal with my family. And I guess everybody else.
But, but it's, I'd say, it, it, and I say to a lot of things, you don't come in, tell us what it is. We make the assumptions, okay.
So it's good that you're here tonight.
Yes, and, and until I don't see an improvement, I will, you, you will see me. And also, uh, is any updates on the, uh, because the, the cars at nighttime on the weekends flying through.
I've talked to the fifth precinct and give them a call again tomorrow. Yeah, every, every neighborhood. And I hate to say this, every, every other, it has just been very. And I hate to say this, every, every other, it has just been a very stressful summer. With the kind of things you're talking about is, you know, whether it's on Mason Avenue, whether it's on Cedar Avenue.
Especially, you know, now the schools, you know, start, then, you know, kids gotta go better. We, and I, myself, I got a, uh, three year old. So, you know, it's like.
Possibility that, that rang a bell when David, when, um, David Kennedy, uh, was reporting before that we're, there's gonna be a committee, he's gonna be able to look at the Terry Street, that humongous parking situation. And he talked about possibilities, landscaping, whatnot. Maybe they'll come up with some ways to calm traffic on on Terry Street that would involve perhaps landscaping. It's kind of a stark road to begin with. So there might be some way, we're talking about traffic calming on South Ocean Avenue, other parts of the village. Maybe there will be some ideas that can be come up with um, to make, slow people down on Terry Street.
And then in regards to the rats, maybe we should consider having a little task force because this is getting bigger. So maybe we can create that little task force to help businesses fully understand, work with the health department. And then maybe that task force can go and see the different areas of how many boxes until this is fixed. Because until it's not fully fixed, they're gonna reproduce all the time.
That's a good point. And, and Silvana, I, I've spoken to a few restaurant owners and, and I know that the village did kind of streamline some of the dumpster situations years ago. But maybe we've gotten a little sloppy. They are, they really want to coordinate their efforts to, to keep things cleaner. Um, they've talked about, uh, recycling cardboard. They've asked if the village could maybe get more involved with helping them recycle cardboard, which creates a lot of waste. But I think maybe it'd be time to, and may, maybe the chamber could lead the way or the restaurant committee. Uh, and maybe some, one of us could meet with them somehow. But they're looking, they do want to streamline situations. So it's not a mess back there.
You have a meeting this morning, it seems like. I don't bring up.
Cause also the other thing is, uh, we, I know last time we were here, you know, we had, uh, said, asked, uh, if there's any way to do like more picking up times, like, you know, they only do like once a week. So I know they do have like three dumpsters in there, but like, like in the middle of it, it gets full. So I guess they go throw the garbage right on the side instead of going into the dumpsters. So so that also brings a lot of issue. And also people from the outside, like I saw the other day, there was a construction guy. He came in, packed everything in, and then they have no space for it. So I don't know, would it be like a door to lock the, I don't know, like something.
But that's, that's been a problem. People coming in using the dumpsters.
Correct. And then, you know, I mean, I did say them, but you know, if you get involved, you know, you don't, you don't know the guy, you know.
Oh, yeah, that's probably not a wise thing. As a business owner who has three dumpsters and, you know, uh, you know, I'm hands on, I'm feet on, I get in them sometimes backing down. What you just mentioned is a problem. But on the other hand, dumpster fees, I mean, our friends, Winter's Brothers, they just increased the, the, the fees, twenty dollars per pickup this past month. That hurts. So it's, it's incumbent upon the business owners too to, to be economical uh, and not let that stuff go, flow, get all over the ground. And, and, and there's a lot involved. So maybe, um, the restaurant committee meeting will, this is something that they can perhaps, we come up with some creative ideas, uh, to streamline the process and get everybody to cooperate with each other.
Because truthfully, I don't know. I mean, they do have three dumpsters there. So I don't know how many restaurants they will own it. So.
Do we still have on the dumpsters or close to the dumpsters, that sign that says the people, only certain people are allowed to throw garbage there? If not, then there're gonna be a fee? Is it still there?
But there's a list, the, the who those people are.
No, I'm just saying because of the construction guy, just like to scare certain people off not to wanna throw.
Well, we
Cause we had a sign.
Quite a few people, you know, that, by the way, the situation is dramatically improved from a couple of years ago.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it was a catastrophe a couple of years ago. And, uh, Dennis Smith led a, led a an activity where, you know, made a lot of changes. Uh, we made changes with the contracts already and so on. And it, it's the wet garbage and the reproduction of these critters. And if we have a warm winter, they're gonna have babies all year round. I mean, they're, uh, by the way, I live next to the war. I should get it cut. There's so many rats out back of my house sometimes, and some, and it's crazy.
I can understand it's, uh, there's always, it's limitation of what we can do. But one of the things we can do, what I will do is I will contact the exterminating companies myself to find out what they're doing. You know, it's one of the things that, that we've started to do, and I'll check with Tim in apartment public works. Is those trucks are supposed to go through those lots every morning and pick up anything that's left. They're gonna pull that, they will pick up, put in our trucks. But, you know, there's that.
That's, it's like, uh, I don't know how many people are like staying behind the dumpsters. I see a lot of, like I said, I threw, I did a walk through the, uh, yesterday, and there's a lot of, um, seems like somebody's staying there. There's a lot of thoughts in there.
And we've brushed the people out beyond them.
You know, so it's. All right, so.
Thank you for keeping us.
Thank you.
Like I said, these days, you'll come down with a better scenario.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next time you're gonna come and say how happy you are.
So, well, you see my face, I need to.
You have to work every day. You have to work every day. Okay. You're sure today?
Huh?
Were you sure what today?
No, no, I don't think so.
All favor. Time's up.
I'm sorry.
Actually, uh, I could divide the agenda up into two parts. Uh, eventually we'll get to the Kelly apartments. And the first part of it will be the demo, what I call the demolition agenda, which is what happened to the carriage house? Let's start there.
What do you mean?
I believe it was demolished, the historic building.
Yeah, it, it could be totally rebuilt upon a street. The, 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 when they start to take it, it starts to crumble under the pressure. So they're, they're going to redesign and look exactly to it. What did it look like before?
It was not structurally sound enough to be moved as was planned.
Okay.
The plans called for sort of a reimagination of that building anyway. It was gonna still kind of look the same, but it was gonna be sort of truncated. Uh, so, you know, it all. And, and if we were to collapse on the way, it wouldn't, you know.
So that, so that was the planned track.
That was the one, right. But it would be, it would be replicated, so to speak.
The, the, the original plan was to hit that front corner, okay, and the roof line and put it on that north west corner of the building. And my understanding is that, you know, by the way, the building's still there. I was down there yesterday. But apparently it's not, it's gonna fall apart as soon as they try.
Okay.
So it's not structurally sound enough to be moved.
Okay.
And it's a brick building. Yeah, it's, it's. Berko steel is really.
Old.
It's over a hundred years old.
Oh, yes.
By the way, I'm trying to get the
The old trolley.
There's a gorgeous fence over there, beautiful gate. Trying to rescue it.
Well, my understanding, uh, trustee Furco is that, as you have to claim the design plan, that is still the design plan.
It's still.
Just not be that building. It's gonna be your.
Yeah, just build it to look like that.
Exactly.
Same to you. You know, we, you get sued for age discrimination, old man. Isn't you younger than I am? So I guess I have to look at this.
The second issue would be the hotel. Uh, uh, that's, is that gonna be demolished? Is that what's happening? Not the hotel, the bowling house.
The bowling house. We're not a demolished hotel.
We have the hotel, yeah.
We have a public hearing scheduled if it gets out of our, for the twenty-second of September, our next meeting, to deal with this situation.
Okay.
If we have to.
So, we, he's been told that the building is, is on state structure. Then he, he will take it down with him. But we say thirty days, what happens? Once you get to the end of thirty days, then it's got thirty, it's really within sixty days. But, um, then if he does it, it'll cost him about three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. If we do it, it costs about eight hundred.
It's a huge amount.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with moving this along. So it just, it's get going.
It just, I'm the same thing.
Right.
But, John, you know, we've gotta live with this public notice stuff. So, you know, it's still probably two months after before we.
Yeah, yeah, but at least it's a process going.
Yes.
Probably something doesn't come to that.
Ah, well.
All right. So those are the two, uh, buildings that is interesting. Now, now we had the wonderful zoning board meeting um, about the Kelly apartments. And as, because it's a big project, it also threw up a lot of issues, which I wanna uh, clarify in my own mind. Starting with the E Industrial District and permissible allowable uses. Uh, well, I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna just point out during the, during the discussion, there was a speaker who, uh, indicated some of the current uses that could be, uh, at that site. Starting with a settling, ammonia, an arsenal, asphalt manufacturing, a blast furnace. The list goes on. And my favorite is sauerkraut manufacturer. The, the list, the, the list, which is very long, hasn't been amended since nineteen eighty-five, I believe.
That was just nineteen fifty-two.
Yeah, so I, I was wondering if perhaps it could be a look at that to.
That's a great idea. This was litigated. This was litigated twelve years ago. Okay? That was an E industrial property and they wanted to put residential property, residential house. They got a permission. It was called Fatfish. It lived right there, okay? And this went up to the county, got, we couldn't approve it, had to go to the county. This was all done last time, and I'm sure it's grandfathered.
Planning board approved this twice before the so-called corners felt in town.
You're missing my point.
No, yeah, we are. We're missing his point. I agree.
Doesn't really matter.
Yeah, no, I know.
Come up.
Yeah, it should be updated. We don't want, we don't want arsenals or smelting plants or.
Well, you're concerned about the zoning code?
Yeah.
Yeah, the zoning code, not the Easter, Mr. Kelly's.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I understood exactly.
Right. Well, I think, I think this, this literally, uh, uses that probably go back to the beginning of Patch of the Village.
Yeah, you're right.
Back to nineteen fifty-three, when that zoning code was deployed.
What year?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, all right. So it's more than, yeah, some of those uses we just don't want here, like, period.
And I have to get rid of the limited smelter in my face.
All right. So that's. I also wanna clarify just two other things quickly, also related to, now this is related to, to Kelly Park. And so you, this board approved. Well, that's a question. Did, uh, let's go back to the Suffolk County Plan, Planning Commission had evaluated the zoning issues, the waterfront issues. The staff rejected it, the board then approved it, but then also approved a new set of recommendations. Those recommendations are not binding on either zoning board or planning board, but they ought to be considered. Is that, is that the, that's, that's the.
Anything that comes out of the county is, is more of a recommendation to us of what they, they feel is and it becomes our decision, the board, or the zoning planning boards.
Okay.
But we very carefully consider their recommendations, especially when it becomes part of the flood plain situation.
Most of them are common sense, um, suggestions that would be in, in, you know, as part of the, uh, plan anyway.
Right, okay. But I just wanna clarify my mind. So it's, it's, the, the, the recommendations that live in our plan, are, are, even their decision is not binding, by the way. Uh, if they were to say, we recommend no, we can still say yes. Right, you've been override, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but that wasn't necessary because.
You're right, it has to be brought by a super.
Your authority.
Supermater.
Yeah.
And, um, my last, uh, question is to do with yourself, actually, counsel. This issue come, this issue came up. I just wanna clarify on my mind. So we got people claim, feeling that instead of having apartments for at five thousand dollars apiece, it should be instead, um, workforce housing. But you pointed out along the way, I think that there is a, there's a proposition against mandating that kind of development. Is that correct?
No, I, I think I was mentioning, someone was arguing that they were completely, that it's rental properties, right? And I said, there, there is cases that says you can't, we can't really consider whether the owner is going to plan to build condos or rental properties. That's not a consideration for the land use quarter. So we can't deny someone saying, oh, we don't like rental projects in the town.
Or it's, we want co-ops instead.
Right, or condos. Yeah, so that, that was my point to that.
Is that a law or a decision by this?
Those are decisions by the courts and it hits on a couple of different issues. One, including, um, the Fair Housing Act, because it could be considered discriminatory for any, any particular municipality, and they've run into trouble like that before, where, uh, they're either, uh, barring certain multifamily housing uses, or they're making it more difficult for a developer to build rental properties. Um, it's also, um, considered outside the authority of like a planning board or C B A, because they're supposed to only be dealing with zoning issues that has to bind in with state law.
Okay.
And so it kind of goes outside of there.
Okay, so, so it's not something you can.
We would like to avoid Article seventy-eight on that too. Yes, very.
If I could just squeeze in one last flooding concern. So, yes, you know, I'm, I'm presuming this is gonna be approved at some point. Uh, but then there'll be flooding issues, or flooding concerns. Let's go with that. So remember my plan to have the flood insurance rates reduced and the village boosts its anti-flooding programs, whatever happened to that?
Well, you would, you'd speak to the senior building inspector because the applications are, it will be out of my ability to, okay, complete.
All right.
So I did forward it to him.
Okay. And just to refresh everyone's memory, the flood insurance that everyone can get, they'll reduce everyone's rates if, uh, the, the community has, means that we'll be talking about.
Standards that they have.
It's the same thing, but it's a good, it's a good structure. And.
And you pointed out which, um, the villages, I think, report had, had qualified. And I, I, yeah, well, that's Peter's side.
Right, because.
He would be the one that would have to put the application together.
Right, because it's inevitable that when this building, well, just the whole village is still at, at environmental risk from hurricanes. Simple as that, including eventually Mr. Kelly's apartment. That's it.
Your house, Mr. Ford.
Well, you know what? It's very funny, but
You're not.
In one of those reports, it's the east side of the river that's gonna get the impacts, and west on less.
The west side is high.
Higher living higher.
The west side is, I doubt, you're not the floods. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in a flood zone. Everyone's in a flood zone. I'm not in a flood zone.
That's what my grandma built on High Land Avenue because it's the highest point of Patch of, it never wanted to go through any kind of hurricane.
You know. Some of your father's pictures today, in an article about the Marin Oil Company, so.
John, it was quite a few years ago when we, the village Patch of added a couple of feet to the FEMA High Water Farm for building living space. We had two feet, I think it was, over the, over the, over the FEMA number at the time. And then FEMA adopted it.
I always see that.
Yes, that was, that was the plastic bag things and the FEMA thing. I mean, it all happened here at Patch of.
Peter's certainly our in-house expert on all things FEMA flooding wise. He really knows the stuff. I will actually follow up with him about this, cause this is right up his alley to, to learn on.
I'm sure he'd be thrilled to get it.
FEMA may not have the cash rest that you can deal to my experience, however.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. All there?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.